Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for our first induction into the fall weather. So this weekend, we fell back and stepped forward into fall. That's the best humor I can do tonight, and really sorry. And welcome to the November 4th edition of the regular city council meeting. And if we all rise, we'd have Mr. Buck come up, or Buck?
Can I do roll call first?
I'm sorry, sit back down, please. That's part of our exercise routine. Okay, I'm just telling you that. Treadmill's next. I'm just kidding.
It's okay.
I've never done these before, so would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Sort of, yes, here. Okay, thank you. Now, we rise and have Bradley Buck of the Bridge to Life Assembly of God Door Infocation.
Father, thank you for this day that you made. Thank you for the privilege of bringing this gathering to you in prayer. Thank you for protecting us, for guarding our steps in ways that we're not even aware of. I ask you, God, to guide our leaders and help them to make wise decisions for the benefit of all of us. I pray that they will pursue truth and justice in all that they do. And with the election looming, I pray, God, that you will also give us leaders for our nation who will pursue truth and justice. I ask you, God, to be merciful to us as a nation. I praise you for your sovereignty, that you order things according to your wisdom and your goodness. We commit ourselves to you for the sake of your great name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we start off the meeting today with requests to talk to council. And the first one in was FCA. And Bobby, are you going to address us?
Kathy? Well, is it possible, do you want a presentation right now? Or waiting?
Well, we usually limit it to three minutes, if we can do that, longer than that.
It was just after we were here last week, it was time to ask.
What's the pleasure, council?
Why not, we told, we come to that.
Okay, we're gonna...
Mayor?
Go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to mention, I think that this is an agenda item, or a portion of an agenda item, for later in the meeting, which then would not necessarily have the time limit. Just wanted to throw that out there as an option.
You said, I didn't see it on the agenda, but it would come up.
Budget.
Budget, the budget agenda, yes, you're right. So why don't we do that? That will come in a little bit. And so, are all rusty? Will you be talking about the same thing, or would you like to have your three minutes of fame? Or?
Yeah, I'll just...
With them?
Wait.
Okay, and Sammy, where's Sammy? Hi, same thing? You all start to take turns and give us your presentation at that time? Okay, good. Well, that was quick, good. Okay, any council members have any announcements or board updates? Would I invite to Emily?
Thanks. I wanted to mention several upcoming meetings. As you all probably know, there's a couple of meetings here at City Hall, and maybe someone else was going to address that too, but we do have a meeting here on November 14th at City Hall at 6:00 PM, at which the Utility Consumer Advocates Office will have a representative here. I believe Deputy Director Joe Pereira will be here. The purpose of that meeting is to talk about how to provide comments to the Public Utilities Commission. The Utility Consumer Advocate is a separate state agency, but they intervene in these rate cases and represent residents and businesses in the rate cases, or represent the best interests of them in the rate cases. So that's November 14th. And of course, the three public utilities commissioners themselves will be here on November 19th for a public comment hearing from 4:00 to 7:00 here at City Hall. So that's a great opportunity to just speak to the commissioners directly. If they do it like they did the one in Pablo, or a couple of them in Pablo last week, you'll have three minutes, more or less, to just speak about what the impact of electric rate increase might be for you, either as an individual or as a business. And then I wanted to mention, too, that a local group, a citizens group that was founded about seven years ago called Canyon City's Energy Future, is just holding an informational meeting next Tuesday, the 12th, from 5:00 to 6:30 in a classroom at the PCC Fremont Campus, Classroom 146. And this is just to provide general information about whatever the latest is as of November 12th, and what that expected or proposed rate increase might be. It will also be an opportunity for individuals or businesses, if you have questions about your specific electric bills, you can bring them along, and we have at least one person in the group who's good at looking at bills and analyzing bills and talking about what an impact might be of an increase. So I wanted to mention those. And also, this month's Cotter Community Advisory Group meeting, which is usually held, third Tuesdays from 3:00 to 5:00, will be the third Tuesday, November 19th, but the time will be different. It'll be 1:00 to 3:00, and it'll be only by Zoom. We will not have an in-person portion of that meeting. But let me know if you have questions about how to connect in by Zoom on that. Again, that's November 19th, 1:00 to 3:00, that's all.
Thank you, Emily. John, did you hear something?
I did.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a couple of things coming up. We've got a general government meeting, going to be talking about water and our rate structure. And we also have that Wednesday morning, KRLN. I do plan to go, but if someone would like to join me, that'd be great.
I'll plan to do that, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. And then we also have a URA meeting that afternoon at 5:00 PM in these chambers also.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? This is your big chance.
Mayor Troutman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't see your yellow hand stick up there. Go right ahead.
No worries at all. We have a Trail Use Policy Committee meeting on Thursday, November 7th, at City Hall at 4:00 PM. We'll be reviewing how our commercial trail events went this year. The city receives 5% of their general gross proceeds from commercial trail events, and we do have a limit on the number, and a lot of provisions in place to kind of protect the health of our trails and the number of commercial trail events that we allow. So we'll be doing our year-end review, and then also looking to 2025 to see if any changes to our processes need to be made. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We'd have the city administrator review that for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 21st, special meeting on October 28th, which was the budget hearing, and October 24th, which was a community conversation. 7B, awards bid 29-24, an 18-foot tilt equipment trailer to Pine Country Inc. of Grand Junction, Colorado, and an amount not to exceed $10,549.05. 7C, awards bid 67-24, Osprey Court Channel Rehabilitation to Avalanche Excavating, an amount not to exceed $387,952.67. 7D, awards bid 70-24, it's an evidence freezer to McKesson, and an amount not to exceed $8,500. 8E, authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services to conduct an EPA cleanup grant application process, and if awarded, carry out implementation and management of the grant, and an amount not to exceed $1,437,160. 7F is to receive and file cash dispersments and P-card dispersments.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions to Ryan on this consent agenda? Amy?
Thank you. Just one request. Ryan, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about 7C and how the city determines which city-owned erosion stormwater issues to tackle. I know that we do it in priority order and kind of looking at immediate needs, particularly when damage to private property is imminent, but I think that this is a hot topic in our town, and it would be worthy of just a minute or two of explanation of how those decisions are made. Thanks.
Sure, I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Leo Evans, to come up and talk about that. But yeah, it is geared towards, you know, when there's potential for property damage, private property damage, and I'll go ahead and let Leo talk about how the determination was made for this one.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and council members. Yes, for this particular project, well, I guess for all projects in general, we kind of look at immediate needs and long-term needs. This project falls into the immediate need category. There's pretty severe erosion on this city-owned and maintained channel that has started to encroach and potentially threaten some private property. There's a risk of losing some backyards and fences, and you know, if it continues, could even get to houses and things like that. So that's generally how we look at these smaller, kind of immediate needs, is really a worst-first scenario. And then looking at other capital projects, we look at all the plans that have been developed and the long-term needs and the bigger goals of the city. So the things like the Rhodes Avenue Channel and those type projects are based on our long-range planning, but this one is more of a short-term, immediate need, kind of worst-first approach.
Thank you.
Any more questions of Leo while he's up there? Jerry, go ahead.
Can I just follow up? So when the, when these were developed, when they, you know, way back whenever it was done, is this a problem that was not identified during that phase of planning? Or how do we get to this point where all of a sudden?
I think we've made a number of similar repairs in Dawson Ranch for other drainages that have had this issue, so there's been some recurrence of similar issues. I don't know that there's other ones that are like this or have been a problem like this. It's potentially something that could have been caught earlier, but it's also something that's taken 30 years to really become the head of the issue. So it's, there's some natural, just creep in there and things that happen over time, too.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Kathy?
Being a resident of Dawson Ranch, I would say a lot of this probably came to a head in 2018 when the big storm came, and with all of the damage that was done, this particular drainage area probably started to become Grand Canyon. There's areas there that are like 12 feet deep and are starting to erode away from the walls that are right next to the property lines of the customers, so the homeowners. So I think basically, it's one of those that was starting to become an issue, but 2018 was when it really became to the forefront of really starting to get more damage. And as we got more and more storms up in that area, it just started to aggravate it even more.
Okay, thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments on this consent agenda? Hearing or singing, and I would then ask for a motion and a second. Emily?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda as presented. Second?
It's a tie. Andrea, you got it, the second. Thank you. Okay, motion made, second, and discussion on that motion? Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you all. And we move on to the long-awaited for administrators' report. Ryan? I do that every meeting, you know that.
I know.
Who's that young lady sitting next to you? I don't think I've seen her. That's Ally, that's our attorney.
Yes, Elizabeth Laboun from Catherine Corey's office.
Well, thank you for coming down. How was the weather?
Thank you. How was the weather?
Coming down.
Oh, it was fine, yeah, yeah. Nice drive. Little chilly, but nothing crazy.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Sure.
Now it's your turn, Ryan.
All right. You have the written administrators' report. I was going to highlight what Councilmember Tracy highlighted earlier. We do have those meetings regarding the Black Hills rate case coming up, as previously mentioned. Also like to mention, I think as everybody knows, tomorrow's Election Day. Please go out, do your civic duty, and vote. Happy to take any questions about the report.
Any questions for Ryan? What do you want, nobody wants to grill Ryan? What, what's the deal? Oh, Tim, go ahead. I don't see your hand.
Nope.
Did you have a question?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
I think Amy has her hand up.
Does Amy? Amy? No?
Thanks, Mayor Troutman. Yes, I do have. Administrator Stevens, could you speak a little bit more about the reference about a dog leash ordinance upgrade signage and perks? Are we thinking, contemplating a new dog leash ordinance, or is it more about signage about the current one? Or could you just chat a little bit about that? Thanks.
Yeah, this is not an update to the ordinance itself, it's more about an update to the signage and making people more aware that there is a dog leash ordinance, and it's really more about education.
Would we also be working with the Rec District on that? I believe one of the biggest issues is along the River Walk. I know several people have been bitten by dogs who are not on leashes over the past couple, over the past year even. However, given the multiple jurisdictions along the River Walk, I think it would be helpful to kind of have coordination with them. Have they already been part of those conversations?
I would have to double-check and see if they've been part of those conversations. The part of the River Walk that the Rec District owns is not in the city limits, so they would probably have to have different signage relating to state statute.
Okay, I think it would be helpful to talk with them and just, whatever the state statute is, ensure that there's as much consistency as possible, but looking forward to seeing and learning more about the updated signage. And thanks as well to CCPD. I know that they've been talking to local citizens about this, and the idea of doing a public service announcement with citizen collaboration is much welcomed.
Yeah, the PD, I think, is working on this type of PSA. I think Code Enforcement is working on a couple other PSAs as well, so we will be rolling some of those out here in the near future.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Then let's move on to number nine on the agenda. It's a discussion, the APWA, which means American Public Works Association. And shall we call Leo forward again?
Yes, sir. We'll ask our Public Works Director, Leo Evans, to come up. This is an award that the American Public Works Association Colorado Chapter gave to the city of Canyon City, and I'll go ahead and ask Leo to present it.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council Administrator Stevens. Yes, the US-50 Pedestrian Improvement Project along the median was awarded here at council about a year ago. Last month, that project was awarded as the best small transportation project in the state of Colorado by the American Public Works Association. So it was a very prestigious honor, and we wanted to take just a moment to kind of thank all of our partners that were a part of this project. You know, whether you like it or not, you know, I don't want this to be that meeting, but if anyone in the community wants to have that, I'm the person, come and find me. We're always still working to try to tweak that and make it as best we can for everybody. So tonight, I wanted to just acknowledge all of our partners that were part of the project. We had a great team of engineers from Wilson and Company that did the design for us. Our contractor, Pyramid Excavating, did an exceptional job of delivering that project in a very short timeframe, getting it done ahead of Blossom Festival. And our own city staff did a great job of administering that job, making sure that we stayed on budget, on time, and that everything was done successfully. And I really just wanted to take a minute and thank everyone that was a part of that for their work, and I know a couple of our city staff are here as well today for that. And I know, as I said, I know Ryan has a little more info about some of the stats and things that we've been kind of keeping track of. It's been about six months that the project's been in place and open, and I know we've been doing a lot of work keeping track of the traffic accidents during that time, and we'll have more on it tonight and maybe later as well.
Yeah, we're working on tracking those stats with the police department, but initial stats that we're seeing after construction was complete was about a 20% reduction in traffic accidents along that corridor.
Would you like to call some of your people forward?
Could I have Ted and Sam come on up? I told them they had to come today, so, and they showed up for me.
Yeah, gentlemen, have you prepared a 10-minute speech at least?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
He speaks for all of us.
Yep.
So.
Well, would you like, we could, would you like to go down there and we can present the plaque? So let's do that.
My camera, get a picture of you guys. Come here, I'm walking, it's all the way to you. Sure. This one's yours, but... Where do you want it? Never done it. I told him I wasn't going to do it. What's that? The H-Track, oh, yeah. Not going to happen. I promise. Are we ready? Okay. Give you a... I'm not going to. 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 I'm not going to.[1515.15]
on. Their total tax bill is, was, for 2024 was $1,827.48. Of that, $61.09 comes to the city. So I just wanted to highlight that. I know that there are talks about, you know, we want to try to help our, our community members with our, our tax bills, but I just wanted to, you know, kind of show what you're actually paying in, you know, to the city on your tax, on your property taxes.
That's it?
So.
Slide one.
That is it for this item? I, I don't know if, you know, if there's any discussion from council about what you'd like to do.
Yeah, is there any discussion, council?
This, this is a revenue item, so this is, this is money that comes into the city. And we'd like to see that as diversified as possible.
Okay, any questions, counsel? Yes, John. Oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, would you remind us what abated taxes are, please?
Yes, those are taxes that the county did not, so they abated the taxes, meaning that we were not able to collect that property tax revenue. And so it's something that the county does, but we are allowed later to recover it.
Do you, would an example of an abated tax be the homestead exemption? Or can, do you have some examples of that?
Ryan, can you, can you help me with that one? I'm, I'm thinking it's when somebody's disputing their property, property value and they go in and make an adjustment and they abate that portion of taxes.
Perhaps a downward adjustment in their taxes.
And so then therefore we lose the, the revenue.
Yeah, I, I think I'd have to get back to you, Mayor Protem. You know, the, the abatement for last year was only $685, so it, it's a very small amount.
Yes. The, if we're, if we're, this is an item open for discussion and it would seem to me that given the trivial amount that we just stick with the 2.887 mills and not try and recover abated taxes. Because that's a, that's a prospective thing, correct? Abated is a, is a retrospective, something that has happened in the past. Our income or our tax revenues declined because something was abated. And what we're talking about doing is raising the mill levy in anticipation of a bait of, or to try and recover.
To recover, yes.
Yeah. So I've, given the trivial amount, I, I think that we should just stick with the 2.887. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but.
Well, if I got a vote, I'd vote for that. Emily, go ahead.
That's actually leftover from last time, but I'll go ahead and speak. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any real strong feelings about it one way or another. I, I would go along with what council member Hammerick suggested, that we just not try to add that little bit on to recover the abated taxes since it is such a small amount. And in general, I'm okay with what staff has recommended. And I'm okay either way on, on the abatement piece of it.
So as I understand, then the mill levy would stay at 2.887? Is that what we're doing? So it stays what it always was?
You, you do have one comment.
Oh, Amy, go ahead. She keeps moving around.
Um, I know with, with PowerPoints open, sometimes it's difficult to see hands. I am, I would like to know where the abatement comes from. I understand that the abatement happens as a, a reduction in taxes due to, you know, incentive programs, but I'm curious where the, the couple hundred dollars actually comes from, if that comes from county dollars or state dollars. I don't have strong feelings on it, but would like more information to be able to make an informed decision. I'd also like to understand what our property tax revenue was in 2024 and 2023? If we're actually generating additional revenue from property tax in 2025? Or if it's, I believe it would be essentially the same as 2024, given that we don't have a property tax assessment, that it only happens every other year. But in future years, I'd like to, I'm really appreciative of having this conversation and would like to continue having it because I, I'd like to ensure that we are exercising our local control over property tax dollars and that we are being really thoughtful about potential increases if there is another hike in assessed values. So I don't know if you have those numbers in front of you, Director Nordike, but if we, if you could share what our revenue for property tax was for the past two years, that would be helpful.
I'm logging into the finance program right now and I'll pull those numbers for you. As far as the abated revenue or the abated taxes, the county basically, whatever they've done, that was our portion that the city was not able to collect in, in the prior year. And so that's not backfilled by the county or the state. The only way we'd be able to have the abated taxes backfilled would be to have a small mill levy for that. I hope that answers that question.
That $587 would be paid directly from taxpayers to the city?
That is correct. And it would be a .003 of the mill levy.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm fine with Mayor Protem Hammerick's suggestion of eliminating that.
Okay. I'm still looking up that number, I'll get it.
Yeah, I believe for 2024 is about 550 and change. But Tammy is working on pulling that, that number up.
It had hovered around 450 to 500,000. With the increase in valuation of the county, at least the last time I was mayor, it was about 450. And so with the increase in valuation overall, it jumped up a bit. So I, I don't, again, I would be very much in favor, just leaving that mill levy there we have at 2.88. It's, it's a number, but it's not a huge number.
Yeah, in 2023, it was 526,602.27.
Thank you. So it jumped about, it's risen about 40,000 over the past two years.
Yeah, roughly.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so for this item, we'll plan on, when we bring this back, we'll bring it back with the 2.887 mills.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Any hands? So is this where we would ask for FCA to give their presentation or not?
We, we've got a couple more items as we go and then FCA.
So we want to go out over the second reading?
Oh, no, this is still part of the budget.
Oh, there's more slides?
Yeah.
Well, we're sure getting our money's worth, aren't we?
That's right.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
It's short, but not that short.
I know, I know. So you're, let's not have any short jokes, okay? All right.
So we'll move on to the next item. The next item is the Community Development Director or Deputy City Administrator position.
So this was something that would, came up during the review process and something the council had asked about. This is, you know, probably looking at a salary somewhere in the range of 125,000-plus benefits. It's how you get to that 166. I've spoken to a recruiter, he thinks that salary might be a little bit low, but this is what we've been able to pull together in the, in the timeframe since we've had that It is not currently in the budget, but if council would like to see it as part of the budget, we can work that in to the, to the final budget that would, we'd bring back to city council for approval.
You wore it out, that's why.
Thanks, yes, I'm, I'm going to keep wearing it out. Anyway, I, generally, I, I'm in support of this. I just think the way, I, we've talked about how many direct reports you have, City Administrator Stevens, and there's a lot of work to be done. And, and you know, we've talked in the past from time to time about how with the bandwidth that we have administratively, that there's some things that maybe don't happen as fast as what we would like to see or gets pushed off because of more emergent issues. I, I guess my only question is, and this probably just doesn't make sense to anyone except me, but is there any point in considering this for less than a full-time position? Would it be helpful at all if it were two-thirds time or some other fraction of full-time?
I don't know that you would recruit somebody with the skill set that you need if it wasn't a full-time position.
Have we done an analysis of other cities, municipalities in Colorado of similar size and how many of them have this type of leadership structure? That's question number one. I have, I think, one more after that. Thanks.
Yeah, there, there's a, I think it varies by city. There's some that are much smaller than us that have this structure. There's some that are our size that operate with or without. It, it really kind of runs, runs the board. I think, I think it's a com, it's a common part of the structure.
And then what else would they do in addition to, to what's on the, the bulleted list? In, in general, I'm not a fan of having, you know, additional levels of hierarchy just to have additional levels of hierarchy. Thanks.
Yeah, so this, this would backfill the Community Development Director position. So the city previously had a Community Development Director. I, I've been acting in both roles since January of 2020. Before that, it was Dina Svetlick, and before that, it was Doug Dotson, before he became the city manager or city administrator. So this, this was a layer of structure that we previously had built into the city organization. When Dina left, we restructured and rethought both her position and the economic development position and created the Economic Development Manager, the Grant Writer, and the Small Business Manager position out of those two positions. So this would really be going back and adding some additional structure in for, for the Community Development or Community Vitality Department.
But we wouldn't, I mean, we would retain all of the additional positions that were created as well.
That is correct, yes.
I, I don't think, I mean, given with all of the other budget priorities that we're about to talk about, I don't think that it's, it's one that I would support at this time if there isn't an additional role other than supervising these departments. Thanks.
Thank you. There's also a key, another item is succession planning. And if you've ever lived through that period of time where you don't have a city manager, and I have, it surely would have been nice to have a definite backup that knew the ropes on what he or she did. So succession planning, I think, is very important for the city as we grow up, so to speak, so. Emily, you will not, would you unplug because I can't, is it stuck? You're not, you're not going to talk again.
Either it doesn't work or it doesn't turn off. I, you know.
All right. Okay, shall we go on to the next role, next slide? No?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My question is, are we, we're just discussing this now, are we going to vote for it? Vote for all the different options at some point, or are we just going to discuss it tonight?
So what, I think what staff is looking for is for direction.
Direction?
So that we can put it into the budget so you can vote at it, vote on it at the budget.
But once it's in the budget, we'll be voting for the whole budget. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're looking for direction on each of these individually.
So should we not, should we not vote for that? Yeah, I mean, even if it's an informal vote, because i- is it going to just be who shouts the loudest or are we going to actually do a vote? That's my question, which is thumbs up, thumbs down?
I think we need a thumbs up, thumbs down. And then based on that, we can present our ordinance at the next council meeting that includes the wishes of council.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
Let's go ahead, Andrea, would you like to start? We'll go this way. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
On this particular one?
This particular one. Thumbs up.
I'm a thumbs up.
Yeah, I have questions, but we're not.
Okay, and Amy, you are?
Thumbs down.
Thumbs down. And where's Tim? Tim?
Tim is thumb, Tim is thumbs down.
Thumbs down, okay, we got two down and five up.
The rest.
Yep. So I don't get to break a vote. I don't, I don't get to rake a thumb. Okay, well, no, anyway, okay, go ahead. Next slide.
Well, I didn't know if his, if.
Jerry, did you have some questions now?
Questions on this or not?
Well, I have questions and it's not going to, it's, it's more along the lines of the, the person that we do choose for this position, are they going to actually address some of our problems specific to the building department? Is it going to be someone that can take that department and make the changes that we've discussed? Or, you know, that, so these are the things I don't know. And that'll only happen, I suppose, when you have candidates and we review resumes and all that fun stuff. So it's kind of like, I want, I want this position, but it has to be beneficial in more than just backup role.
Yeah, understood. And I think those are, you know, fair questions.
Jerry?
Thank you.
Next slide.
Okay, so our next slide was, the items were the Fremont, Fremont Center for the Arts. At the last meeting, they did state that there was, the Unbridled was providing $25,000 in matching funds and that they were asking the county for funding as well. Since they have a presentation, I don't know how you want to proceed with that, or do we want to discuss what the swimming pool, what the options for the swimming pool are? Or how, how you'd like to handle that?
Emily.
Thank you. My button doesn't seem to be working at all now, but that, that's okay. I, I wondered if, Tammy, could you remind us where in the budget document the, the funding for the three entities that we handle differently separately? The Chamber, the Fremont Center for the Arts, and I think Golden Age Center is the third one? If you could just remind us where in the proposed budget those are?
Yes, that is in non-departmental, and that is our line item. Let me get you the number in one moment. It is line item 10-410-0155-54012, contract local nonprofit.
Can you say that again?
Yes, I'm sorry. So it is in the non-departmental in general fund.
Thanks.
And that's on page 59 of the PDF. It is page 64 of the electronic document.
Great. Thanks.
There is a total in that line item of $115,980 that is in the proposed budget right now. That does cover Golden Age Center, the Chamber contract for tourism, and then in addition the Chamber contribution. And then also we have the funds in there for Fremont Center for the Arts, their annual contribution that we do.
Mr. Mayor, this may be a time to go ahead and have the FCA come up and do their presentation.
I don't like to, we want to talk about that.
It's quietly thinking here. So would you like to start off? We had Bobby and, or Kathy and all of you here. Why don't you come up to the podium and go forward?
Again, thank you for allowing us to come back with this presentation. We will begin with our request.
Art is the heart of our community. Fremont Center for the Arts creates experiences that connect people to art, ideas, and to one another. We engage, educate, and excite our rural community by collecting, exhibiting, and preserving works of art for the enjoyment of all. On June 25th, 1947, what is now known as Fremont Center for the Arts was founded. We have the distinction of being the oldest private continuously operating nonprofit art center west of the Mississippi. Fremont Center for the Arts collaborates and partners with other organizations within our community to cultivate a desire to explore all the art offers. We feel that engaging in the arts provides many benefits, strengthening creativity and imagination, improving critical thinking skills, making a difference in personal growth as well as community cohesion. We strive to foster connections among our communities through integrated multidisciplinary art experiences. Fremont Center for the Arts, the word for, it has purpose. We stand with, we come alongside, we support, we encourage. You, the community, belong, and you are connected. Artist-led projects have the potential to create long-lasting impact because the cultural artifacts they produce, films, paintings, sculptures, remain. As an art center, we encourage our community to reflect its unique and cultural heritage, celebrating our traditions, stories, and preserving our history. While membership is encouraged, Fremont Center for the Arts remains free and open to the public as part of our commitment to promoting art in our rural area. Monthly, Kansas City hosts the First Friday Art Walk. Our participation provides a venue for local artists to exhibit their artwork. A vibrant atmosphere brimming with talent. Our exhibits are known to bring lovers of art from all across the country. We recently celebrated our seventh year hosting the Federal ADX Show, Art the Hard Way. Because of the success of this program, we are now collaborating with the Colorado Department of Corrections in forming a state prison art exhibit. Beginning in 1997, we partnered with Fremont County Schools to spotlight the young talent in our community. We also designate student gallery space for our monthly exhibits. One of our many programs that we provide is the Creative Kids Arts Team Class. While this class is designed for homeschooled students, it is open to any interested children in our community. Our foundation, our organization, mission, vision, and values. Our purpose articulates Fremont Center for the Arts' reason for being. Our why. To create experiences that connect people to art, ideas, and to one another. To engage, educate, and excite our rural community by collecting, exhibiting, and preserving works of art for the enjoyment of all. This purpose is our guiding principle as we strive to achieve our goals. Securing the Colorado Creative District designation for Fremont County. Growing our collaboration with Fremont County School Districts. Golden Age Center. Kindred Kids. Rooted Gypsy Repertoire. Kansas City Public Library. Star Point. The Rialto. Bell Tower. Florence Arts Council. Public Arts Committee. Local wineries. Florence Arts Council, Public Arts Committee, Local Wineries, ADX, and DOC, and so many more. Art has been shown to reduce stress, increase self-esteem, and improve our ability to cope with difficult emotions. Art provides a safe space for us to express our thoughts and feelings, allowing us to connect with ourselves on a deeper level. Art gives meaning to our lives and helps us understand our world. Creating and appreciating art help the brain to form and recognize concise connections. Art promotes cognitive flexibility and problem-solving skills, key attributes especially for young developing minds. Art helps to develop and maintain fine motor skills. We believe a more viable location with a larger space will offer greater exposure to the community and visitors. This space will allow us to accommodate performing arts, dance, literary, and musical arts. Now is the time to bring this vision to life. Will you partner with us? At Fremont Center for the Arts, we believe that art has the power to transform lives and bring communities together. But we need your help to continue our mission. Your support is crucial. Ways to join us in our journey include: membership, donating to enhance our facilities, sponsoring a gallery wall, and contributing to exhibits that inspire and educate. Every donation, no matter the size, makes a difference. Help us build a vibrant space where creativity thrives. Visit our website to donate and learn more about Fremont Center for the Arts. Together, let's paint a brighter future. Thank you for your support. Art is the heart of our community.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We, we have a PowerPoint that we'd like to show you about what we're gonna do for 2025, 2026, and going into 2027. If we go into the classic furniture building, that gives us a chance to dream our dreams and have our visions become a reality. So, going into this, this is a rendition of what it looks like once we take over and become Fremont Center for the Arts. You can see that we have the frame shop on the west side, the gallery on the east side. One thing that we discussed today is how important it is to have our library, um, as a part where people can come in and actually take and enjoy it. And right now, it sits upstairs, and there's really no availability to it, so we want to place a, um, an area in the art center for that. Phase one. Our hours of operation to be six days a week with the possibility of seven. I know that's important to our community. Artist Resource Center. A retail market for art supplies. The Art Lounge, that is the library that we're talking about. Framing. Studio space and studio time. Wall sponsorship. Artists leased display walls. Classes. Creative Kids. STEAM. I can't see the next one. The mentorships. First Fridays, which had the live music. Featured artists, artist talks. Concerts. Open mic night. Poetry. Wineries. State and federal prison art show. Collaboration with Fremont County Schools. Theater group rehearsal space. Right now, we have the, the Rooted Gypsy Repertoire has been using our facility for the Mary Poppins play that's coming up soon. We will, um, go into the events, the Art of Giving Gala. Um, then we're also going to do a masquerade and have the building available for event rental. Thursday Night Market is a new thing that I brought to the board, and that is for the summer months, May through September. I would like to have what we call the Summer Sunset Series concerts, where we work with everyone in the 500 block to put on, um, basically a night market, a farmer's market space, and have live music going, not it to be acoustic, so it's gonna be, you can have more, multiple, um, people on the Main Street. Uh, we will need to add to our employees, so we will add three more employees. Again, I can't see that. Going into phase two, 2026, we're gonna utilize the west side of the building, that's the Maker Space Craft Market. Expand our children's programs to go and meet on Saturdays. A lot of our students are homeschooled, as, as I mentioned, but the others, other kids in the community can take advantage of the Saturday days. Expand our adult classes to include photography, calligraphy, paper quilting, and more. A visually impaired gallery. Dance. Writing club. Host a plein air painting event. That would probably be in the spring, because the Bell Tower has one in the fall. Collaborate with local, um, eateries to do food tasting and wine pairings. Implement trending creative classes, so right now, we want to stay current to what's hot. The, um, alcohol einks have been a super exciting, uh, class for all of us to take, so... And that's not with alcohol, that's with isopropyl alcohol. Clarification there. Um, going into phase three, we will expand on what is working and develop new programs as necessary. So in your packet, we put together a little bit of everything about us, so with that, if you have questions, we have a good majority of everybody here, so...
Questions? Go ahead, Kathy?
I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but you have such great ideas, you have a wonderful, I love the art center. I know that, you know, you're talking about moving, but you're not saying one thing about how the hell you're gonna get the money to do what needs to be done, including upgrades to classic furniture, if that's where you're gonna go. And I know that's why you're here, is to ask the city to give money, but I don't see any plans that, as far as any fundraising or anything else from you folks. And that takes business minds, and it also takes marketing people. So, I'm sorry, but that's what I'm throwing right back at you right now.
Right. Currently, we do have our, um, capital campaign, we're sitting at a little over a hundred thousand on that.
How long has that been there?
It's been there a long time. We do have a matching twenty-five thousand with Unbridled, and we do have a positive result from the Fremont County Commissioners. With that, we've held our own for the last five years, except for our building. Our building is the part that always seems to bring us down. If that's not something that we have to contend with, then we see a profit, if you look at your pro forma that we put in there, we see a profit. And being open six to seven days a week, where we, our foot traffic is maybe, if we don't have people, we see people on First Friday, and then maybe ten a week if we're lucky.
When did Unbridled tell you that they were going to sell the building?
Uh, probably about a year and a half ago, I guess, I'm, I'm at least a year and a half ago.
Okay, that's when the business plan should have been written right then and there. To start figuring out, either finding the funds to bring in a professional fundraiser, or start doing your planning then, instead of waiting till about six months, it seems like, it is more, but it feels like just six months till the door is closing on you.
Right, and we have been struggling to get there, and we have, uh, grown our board size to accommodate the additional help that we needed for that. We have business-minded people on there to help us bring us to fruition.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this, this is a budget hearing, um, and I, based on the information in front of me, I don't see a ask for the city. Uh, and that's, that, you know, if we're, if we are to be good stewards of our city money, uh, we need, uh, we need, you know, facts and figures. Emphasis on the figures, because this is what we're doing tonight, is uh, setting the figures, setting our budget. But what is, what is your ask?
The ask is the cost of classic furniture. Seven hundred thousand.
So, the current building belonged to FCA at one point?
At one point, in 2019, it was sold.
And it was sold, uh, and a five-year lease was entered into?
Correct.
With, um, Unbridled, sold to Unbridled. Yeah. The, um...
What we've been doing for the last five years is trying to fix that, that wrong to a right.
And I, I'm gonna jump in. None of the current, of board members with FCA were part of that back then, when that was, the building was sold?
No. Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and you're, and I'm, okay, so trying to write this and make sure that our community keeps this, keeps this, uh, this whole program and that going, this, you know, I, okay.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I'm not sure if you can see my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Amy, go ahead, and then Emily.
Okay, um, could I, that's wonderful that you had a positive result from the county commissioners. Um, are you able to share what they committed to?
We, um, we haven't had the final meeting with them, but it, it sounds very nice, I mean, it's not, of course, I would like to have a million dollars, but that's not possible, but...
Gotcha. And just for clarity's sake, um, the cost of classic is a million dollars, you have commitments and funding for three hundred of it?
Classic's actually seven hundred, and current, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, I didn't mean to cut you off, please.
No, you're fine, uh, currently, we have a hundred, a little over a hundred in our campaign, and then with the matching with what we would get from Fremont County Commissioners, um, we could be close to sitting at three hundred.
Got it, which is what you would need for the renovations to the building?
Right, we've been collecting bids on all of that to, uh, get a good idea of what it's gonna take.
Wonderful, and I think, um, you have the, the numbers, um, if I'm not mistaken. I, I'm not sure if there's something that you can display, or if, um, if Brandon has them, um, but just, as Mayor Protim Hammerk noted, since it's a budget meeting, having the the figures of kind of what you're asking for from the city and what that would look like, I think would be helpful to, to display if possible.
Right, I do have the, um, proposed budget of, I don't know if that's what you're asking for.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this shows what your income would be in 2025 and what your expenses would be. And the building isn't on here because your, like, the ask essentially would be that the city would purchase and own the building, and you would operate it, is that, am I understanding you well?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so, I mean, from my perspective, like, this, if the city is purchasing the building and owning the building, and FCA is operating it to be able to provide all of those wonderful things, um, to our community, I think that the, what, from my perspective, what, what being a good steward of taxpayer dollars would look like is, do we think that that building as a city would be worth owning? Um, we wouldn't kind of be in the same situation that FCA was in in 2019, when they made the difficult decision to sell the building, because they wouldn't have the ability to sell the building, it would be the city's building, and we could do with it, um, as, as we saw fit, kind of for the, for the city. So I think really, the question before us is, is that building something that we think would be a good asset, um, for the city to own? Um, understanding that it would bring significant life and significant activity and significant culture um, to Main Street. Um, from my perspective, we have six hundred thousand in the budget for Clock Tower Plaza, and I think that what FCA is proposing to do with this building on Main Street is worth significantly more to the city in terms of creating that sense of place, in terms of giving back to our, our students, um, in terms of um, bringing art and culture to our community. I would hate to see FCA, uh, go away, and I think that kind of this sort of partnership where the city is acquiring an asset, um, and then FCA is operating it, is a, a really unique one. Um, and I, I think it would be worth considerably more than, um, than the Clock Tower Plaza renovation, for example. So I do think that there is a, a place that we could draw from, um, from the city budget. I would want the city to, uh, city staff to evaluate, um, classic furniture, to make sure that it is a building that is, is worth the city owning, um, and that we think would have a, a long-term positive impact, um, for the city. Over.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Last time when you were here, you said you wanted to own a building, so that it would be in your own, you could handle it the way you wanted to handle it and so forth, are you now saying that you're willing to let the city own the building?
Absolutely, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we continue. And if it's the cost of a building that keeps being the issue of why we keep dipping into our savings, then if that's taken away from us and we don't have to worry about it, the thought of having your house paid off, and you can breathe a little bit, that would be incredible. If we could have the money to pay off something, it would, it would always be to purchase, but if it means that the city purchases and owns it, and that means it can never be sold again in the future, then I'm a hundred percent on board.
Have you done a parking feasibility, because I don't see, looking at those great, uh, attendants that you have at all your galleries and stuff that way, where are they gonna park?
The same as they do right now, they're parking on Main Street. They walk over, they park on Main Street and come see us on First Friday. They don't park it at the FCA building.
Emily?
Thanks, I, I'm struggling a little bit with the numbers, and when I reviewed the materials that were emailed out this afternoon, I, I just couldn't quite put it together, what you were asking for, it kind of goes to what's already been said. Um, it, it just wasn't clear to me at all, number one, what the price of that building is, number two, that you were asking the city to acquire that building. So, do I understand correctly on the projected budget that the line that says building payments slash improvements, the thirty-six thousand per year, or maybe I should just ask, what, what is that thirty-six thousand?
Basically, we're gonna earmark three thousand dollars a month for improvements, things that we would need to do for ourselves, so that's what that price is in there.
So that's solely for improvements?
Yes.
On a monthly basis? Yeah, I, I don't, I, I'm just struggling with not realizing what you, from what you emailed out, that this was what you were going to be asking for.
Ryan, I have a question. Um, the Clock Tower Plaza, what kind of grants were we looking down the road that we could use to implement that?
Uh, we're looking at a DOLA, um, Energy Mineral Impact Grant, uh, which would be a fifty-fifty match.
And so what, what would the value of that be?
Uh, we, we would put in, um, I think what we budgeted was six hundred thousand, and then we'd be asking for DOLA for six hundred thousand, so one point two million total.
Jerry? Oh, thank you, Mayor, my button doesn't work now. So, um, first question for you guys, how does your, your 2025 and so on, projected budgets compare to twenty-three and what you budgeted for twenty-four? Are they close?
They're close, what we typically have for our budgets is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, we are going to staff, increase our staff level. And you, you have another question?
Okay.
I didn't know, I thought, I heard you breathe that you were gonna say something. Um, but with that, we're gonna bring, introduce more classes too, so...
And then my other question, I, I'm kind of agreeing with, um, Councilmember Schmisher on this, but is there enough time in the year to even pull something like that off, if it, if it was viable, or if we decided it was a good idea? For, maybe for you, Ryan? Your thoughts on that, not, I don't know you have the answer, but maybe your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, you know, we would have to evaluate, it, I don't know that it would be done by the end of the year, if, if that's the question. There's a lot to do before the end of the year. I do have what the FCA submitted I do have what the FCA submitted for 2024 for their funding request and their budget request, or what they had for revenue was 200 and roughly 219,000 and they had matching expenses. 219, yes.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions for FCA. First of all, I'm kind of confused about your classes for school-aged children. Why aren't they at times where schoolchildren can be there?
Our Tuesday classes is for homeschoolers.
Why aren't they for public schoolchildren?
We, and that we're trying to work out where we can have public schoolchildren on Saturdays and have two sets of classes.
But you couldn't adjust the hours?
The time that we've had for the creative class has been in existence for.
Thank you for the question, the Creative Kids Homeschool Art Class has been around for almost 10 years. We have a very large homeschooled community here in Fremont County, so that was designed to serve them. But we did do STEAM and creative classes during the summer as well, where we had public schoolchildren attend. But that is very important to us to start having kids' classes again on Saturdays so that we can fulfill the needs of more students in our community.
Okay, and in the event that the city did purchase the building and just, would you be able to work with city staff in inputting? I mean, taking their guidance on programs or helping out? Would, I mean, would that be something you'd want?
Is that something that you want, I guess, that's the.
Well, if we, we own the building.
Right.
That, you know, that's, that's something that you might want to consider.
Right.
That there would, we, you know, we're not King Tut, we can't just hand it over to you. And we, you know, we might want to do things collaboratively with the city staff. That's, that's a possibility, would that be something that, that you would be interested in?
Yes, it would be.
That you would, but you wouldn't rather just be independent, in other words?
I'm, if we can, either way, it's a win for FCA, and that's what I'm looking at it. It's not something that we're going to go and be all, it's for FCA, all of this is for FCA. Everyone that's here to speak, they're here for FCA, they're not here for themselves. It's really not a self-serving thing, it is a community-oriented program. And so if we are going to be gifted the money for a building, then we are absolutely appreciative. If we were given the grant money to acquire our own building, we would be elated. Whatever has to happen to make sure the FCA continues, that is the board and my goal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah. Ryan, oh, I'm sorry, Tim, go right ahead.
Well, you know, I'm going to talk just a little bit, I think, like I said, you know, I think it's very important to have something like the FCA in our community. And, and regardless of how their finances have been, you know, in the past and, you know, whatever the struggles have been, you know, that's, again, there's that key word, it's in the past. But I think we need to look at this for the future. I'm not, I am not a big person to support different private entities for, for this, to help them out through the government, but I, I don't really see this, it is a private entity, but it is a public entity as well, and they do so much in our community. They offer so much for so many different levels in our community. And, you know, I've, I've got to watch the city purchase some different properties that even to this day have sit in vacant. You know, I, I think this could be a very good collaboration between the city and, and FCA and, and, you know, as much as, you know, you know, we have a, a whole thing for, you know, to revitalize downtown, you have the, you have the Art Center downtown. I think that's one, going to be one of your biggest pulls for bringing people downtown. I, I think this is so important for us to take a very, very serious look at. And, and I don't, I don't want to see us lose FCA just because, you know, I've enjoyed going there. And, and like I said before, at a few meetings ago, you know, I enjoyed it more than anything when I got to walk in there and see my son's art on the wall along with all his classmates. I think they just do a fantastic job, and I think this is something that we really need to work on saving. Thanks.
Anyone else? Ryan?
Kathy, can you talk a little bit, I, I understand, you know, you, you want to expand revenue by adding programming, but how are you going to be successful in that? Can you talk about what you and the board are going to do to, it, it's more than just hanging a shingle, it's more than just moving a building or moving to a new location.
Right.
You know, you, you have $625 a month set aside for advertising. That, that's not enough to.
Right.
Raise your income by $150,000.
No, we definitely have to get the word out, we do. What I see is location, location, location. When you drive down Main Street, those lights, those windows, the frame shop setting there where we can actually get people in, right now we're sitting in a building, we don't, people walk up, they don't even know if the lights are on or not because of the glare. And so if they can come up and know that we're just like Nancy, we're going to be open seven days a week, you can count on us that we'll be there, we'll listen to the community and what they're wanting to do, what programs they're asking for in our area. There's a, there's a huge need for the arts in our situation here. And just to have that part of Main Street filled up and vibrant and excelling, I don't know. I mean, I get excited about it, but it's going to take all of us. We're going to have to go out there and promote, promote, promote. And work with the other Sangre de Cristo, the Colorado Springs Fine Arts Center, and just cover the entire Colorado community. I want to work with the tourist council to bring in so that when they're coming in, our Thursday night summer session, they can actually begin their weekends on a Saturday, or a Thursday, sorry. On a Sunday, I like to go up to either Breckenridge for their farmer's market because it's a lot of fun. They have the live music, or we go over to Crestview. So can you imagine having Canyon City vibrant, boosting, having a great time, starting in on a Thursday night? Every, every Thursday night, having the night market back? Just having that kind of atmosphere to, to have downtown? Can you imagine the boost that it would be for them? Helping them is going to help us.
Okay, Emily?
I, I guess I'm just mainly struggling with not, not having options to evaluate here. And, you know, being, if I understand correctly that, you know, it's, it's either the classic furniture building or it's nothing. And I, I know that there's things that led up to that point. But I, I just struggle with how the city fits into that. And I, you know, I am a long-term advocate for what the Fine Arts Center does. When I was on city council in the 80s, absolutely supported the efforts then and still do because it is such an important part of the community. But I'm just cringing a little bit at this kind of, you know, late in the year proposal that the city, and I didn't know the price of the building until you talked about it tonight.
I, I believe I spoke about it the last time we were here, but.
Well, I haven't seen it in writing, maybe it was and I missed it.
Okay.
But I, what I don't see in writing here is, here's our financial needs and here's how we're going to meet them. Instead, I, I see a request for the city to buy a building that the city may or may not decide it's in the city's interest to purchase. I, you know, it's just a struggle for me because I think we all want the, the work of the Fine Arts Center to continue, but I just am not comfortable with this current way to go about it. I, I don't know what the answer is other than maybe there's going to have to be some kind of a transition plan and, and do a different approach in terms of what the future looks like, but.
Would you, would you be willing to hear from the community and how they feel?
I'm totally, I, I'm, as many people who want to speak, I, I just, I'm looking at it from my role on council and I am struggling with what's being proposed.
I do.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Administrator Stevens, how many other requests do we have in front of us for buildings?
I think, I think when I originally spoke with the FCA, the chamber came right around the same time. They went a different direction with their, their capital campaign. Over the years, we've had others from, you know, I think, I think we've talked loaves and fishes at one point. I know that Family Crisis Center, you know, is looking for additional building. There, there are others out there that, that are looking for buildings that, you know, I don't know that they've necessarily approached us, but there are certainly other entities that need buildings.
The, if we were to entertain this, would, would we be charging rent on our building?
That would be the recommendation of staff, yes, sir.
What would be, what would, what kind of rent would cover a $700,000 building?
I, I don't know that I can answer that question at this moment in time.
The, and the, you know, kind of along those same lines, the, for, for me to feel really good about this, I would like to see some, some audited financials. You know, I mean, essentially we're, we're becoming partners with FCA by providing a building at some undetermined cost, but the, the, you know, picking up what Councilmember Tracy said, you know, it would be awfully nice to see more meat on these bones. I mean, we have a projected budget and the FCA has been bringing in $377,000 a year.
I believe that's the 2025.
That's, that's a past question, has the FCA been bringing in, how close do you get to that number?
We're about 100 off. 100,000, yes. Yes.
So, so that, that's part of the question is how realistic are these income numbers? You know, because if you're $100,000 short in a budget, you know, the, it doesn't seem like that's, you have a viable plan. And so those, you know, the, having said that, I also want to say, you know, I'm, I'm totally in, in support of the arts and I think that, that this city needs something like this. And I'm sure the mayor has some, some words that he'll share with us later, but, but the, the problem is, is that there's, from my perspective, there's a lot of kind of by guessing by golly going on here. And that's, that's, that concerns me, thank you.
John, if I may.
Amy, go ahead.
I think, I, I was just, just to respond to what Mayor Protem Hamrick asked, I think that there's a similar increase in the projected expense of FCA because they're planning to add multiple staff to be able to be open more days a week and to offer more classes. So I believe we have the 2024 PNL that FCA submitted for the, for the normal funding that we've done for, for the past several years to them. And I think that they were in the black for this past year. So I, I believe, and Kathy, Bobby, please correct me if I'm, if I'm misinterpreting the projected budget, but I think what they're proposing is an increase in staff, an increase in activity. And they are, so they're proposing more profit, yes, but they're also proposing more expense which would help them get to that profit, if I'm, if I'm looking at 2024 correctly and then this new proposed budget, over.
Correct.
Anyone else?
I would, I would point out that this is not the first time that the council has been asked to come to the aid of, of FCA. This was a, a subject of discussion in 2019. At that time, the city was in discussions with FCA to, that if the city was to provide a building and perhaps other funding, that, that, that the, essentially, FCA would be incorporated into the city rather than a standalone 501(c)(3), as I understand the, what was, what we were talking about, about back in 2019.
Was it 2019 or was it 2016? Because I know that there were talks in 2016 as well.
The documents I have are dated 2019. I don't know if you have copies of them, I'd be glad to provide you with a copy. But there was, and also any member of council who might like to see it. But at that time, there was a, a business plan developed by FCA and with projections of cost. The, I would note on, on the projections of cost in, now, five years ago through last year, 2023, that their highest salaries and wages was 85,500. And now we're talking about 200 or so.
For five employees, as opposed to two.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
For five employees, as opposed to two.
Go ahead.
I'm really concerned about $7,500 for advertising. There's no way that $7,500, and is that for the whole year? It's, it's under 2025. It says 7,500, I'm, regardless, it's going to take, if you're going to up your sales to that level, if you're going to add $100,000 to your income, you're not going to do it with $7,500 in advertising, marketing. Marketing's the engine that'll get you that other 100,000. And you need, you need professional help to figure that out because that's way too low. So that's something else you probably need to think about is to either find someone who can volunteer, someone who is, is a professional marketer that could help you with it or that you could pay them by the hour to figure that out. But to get to another 100,000, because I, that, I wish I could get to that much with only 7,500 myself to get another 100,000, it's just, it's really hard. So that's something to think about, thanks.
Anyone else?
I would like to ask our administrator, what, what would you, as the city administrator who would be administering this arrangement, what would we need to do something like this? We would have to have a contract, is that, I mean, that's, that's, that's the minimum.
That's the minimum, yes.
But what, what, what do we need as a city to evaluate this proposal like this?
I, I think if, if there are any additional considerations that the council wants to see, we would need to know what those are to work into a contract. Of course, FCA would have to be amenable to those additional considerations as well. You know, we, we would have to evaluate, you know, the cost of, you know, it, it's not just buying a building, there's no more expenses, we have to insure it as the city as well. And, you know, there's, there's additional costs, e, e, even if you do a triple net lease with them, there's still additional ongoing costs that we would have to evaluate as well.
What, what would we have to do in, in terms of meeting our building codes?
Again, I think that's something that, you know, we would have to figure out based off of what they're going to do and, you know, if, if we're buying the building and handing it over and they're going to handle their own tenant improvements, or is the city going to handle the tenant improvements? These are all, these are all deal points and things that you would want to discuss and you'd probably, you know, if, if council decides to go this far, you'd probably want to discuss those in the executive session.
And the, there would be life safety improvements that would be needed?
They would be required to move from a mercantile to a, an assembly occupancy. There, there is, you know, there, you know, one, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is, you know, FCA, you know, if they were to acquire the building either through their own financing or owner carry, you know, approaching the urban renewal area to help cover some of those, or, yeah, the urban renewal authority the Urban Renewal Authority to help cover some of those costs. I, I still see that as the, as the cleanest path would be approaching urban renewal and asking for a special project to, to sprinkle the building. That way, if FCA were to ever move away from that building, it would still be sprinkled and could be used for other things in the future.
Anyone else? It's my turn, right? So I, I've seen this for a long time. This is my 50th year in doing business here. I've seen FCA struggle, I'm proud of it. I'm, I like to go in there, like to see it. I think as a council, we have to look at a higher level of what's going on here. We have acquired properties which, to my dismay, we still own and there's nothing happening on it. There's a lot of reasons for that, but there's not a heck of a lot of economic benefit for the ownership of those properties. This isn't immediate economic benefit. If you don't think that's not going to be a draw for downtown, we need to have a private session. I can tell you for what I do for a living, I can tell you that is going to bring people downtown. It is going to have an immediate effect. I have visited Manitou, I have been over to Salida, and those buildings there, the Manitou one that I was in had work stations, what you call the work areas, and it's very popular. People come in going, that was an old garage where they fixed their Ford trucks or whatever was in that. The city, I think, gave that to them, they were capable of having that. But we look at what we have, I would be concerned that we would spend 1.2 million dollars, even though we got the other half, that's still tax dollars. For what, for, for, for what? There's no return there on that. It's pretty, it'll be pretty. Where's the economic return? I, I don't see it. This would be an economic return of value to our citizens, to downtown, and I think immediately. As far as marketing, I think when that opens up, there's going to be a draw. Look where you're at now, you're a draw. Look where you could be and for the city. I think it's important. I would put off other things just to do this. So, but please look at that, that higher picture and for talking about development and keeping the downtown the way it is and having an economic return, all those people down there will benefit, I think, almost immediately. So I'm very much in favor of this. Okay? Yes, Kathy?
I will say I have no problem with postponing or eliminating the Third Street Clock Tower project. I have no problem with that. I would say that on your 25 budget, you know, you're getting bids right now for the improvements that are going to have to be made and so forth. Are you going to be able to get those done quick enough to be able to have a 12-month budget, to be able to bring in all those programs and stuff that you hope to do? That would be one thing I'd be a little concerned about because you're probably not going to get them started until probably the first of the year.
The, it's going to be tweaked. I mean, we'd have to see how long we can be in our building. Currently, there is no contract on the Boys and Girls Club. So with that, Stan has allowed us to do a month, a month to month. So what we have projected for January, we would still do in that, in, in the post office building.
Okay. Tim, go ahead, Tim.
No, I, you know, I want to jump in and just, I, I just totally agree with what you said, Preston. I think this is, again, it's, it's money that I think is so important for us to, to keep a program here and again, a draw for downtown and, and our downtown needs something to draw. I mean, and I think this would be, like you said, an immediate, you know, with immediate results from this and I just think it's an important thing that we really, really got to make sure that we, I mean, we do some silly things on council sometimes. I think this is one where the money is beginning to be well spent. Thank you.
It must have been the other mayor. I'm just kidding, sorry. But that's my feelings on it. We, we have acquired, we're looking forward to acquiring the Black Hills property. I see a tremendous uphill on that and immediate return, I don't know. Trust me, this is, I know that we have Rick here and he probably does not want to comment. He's giving me the eagle eye. But economic development for our area and our for downtown is going to be a big deal. And we need to not let this pass by, in my opinion. Anyone else?
Let me try another shot. But what, what do we need, Mr. Administrator, to buy the building and have a plan for it? I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that we have to do if, if that's the direction we want to go in.
Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, budget doesn't get approved until December. You know, I mean, this is, you know, we're talking about our 2025 budget. So that's, you know, that, that's one thing. So you're, you're not even looking at a purchase until sometime in 2025. We would have to do our own due diligence with, you know, the same thing we do when we purchase other properties. And then again, I think council as a body needs to have an idea of what they want out of a relationship if you decide to move forward with this and what you expect out of FCA and, you know, what, you know, make sure that you're going to get the returns that you want.
Emily, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to be sure that my own notes were correct. City Administrator Stevens, I think a little while ago, you gave a number of, I don't know if it was 2023 or 2024 revenue or expected revenue, which was very different from what's on this. I wrote down 219,000.
Their, their 2024 projected budget that they submitted for their funding agreement was 219,000.
219. So that, that's part of my struggle here is that we have all the discussion about building and place and location and how important all that is, but I still am not seeing how you go from 219 to 377. I, I'm just, and if that is how you envision that you need that kind of budget in order to move into a place like Classic Furniture, I, I just don't know how that comes together. And that's all separate from the cost of building. That's budgeting for the organization.
Mayor Protem Hammer, to, to go back to what your previous question, you know, I think another thing that you, as council, would probably want to see is a detailed business plan on what was discussed here and more so the mechanics and the tactical ways that they're actually going to, you know, implement what, what they're saying they're going to implement.
Okay, we have a new fellow here at the microphone. Would you introduce yourself?
Mayor Troutman, thanks for having me, Councilmember Sean Kaufman. I'm owner operator out of Bugling Elk Vineyards. We just opened up over a year ago. So a couple of things that you guys are mentioning tonight, a lot, a lot of things, I should say, are going to take a long time. We just, we cannot figure it out sitting here tonight. There's a little bit of snarkiness coming in. And the thing is, is as professionals, if we're really looking at this, let's look at options, how to get to yes. So when we look at this, what if we lease to buy over a year period to where the FCA has an option to purchase and the city could come in and say, well, we also want to hold that right to that option to purchase as we hold the lease for 12-month period to see where we are and we come back to the financials and look at where we will be for 2025. Now, I've already come forward with the Classic Furniture saying that they have to be ADA compliant for two bathrooms in there. I'm going to do both of those pro bono and I know there's a lot other people out there that want to come forward to see this thing through because what the mayor mentioned, the mayor mentioned this has value in it and not just a monetary value, there's a long cultural value through art. And so when we start looking and picking at certain numbers, we can lay down some certain numbers if you guys really want to go into details, but I don't think we're in here for the fine details today. You start looking at, well, how are we going to get to that revenue? Well, already Sandy Freeman, who's out at my winery, all of her arts on my walls, she wants to rent space. She's one of many people that want to rent wall space, which would equate to just over $5,000 roughly a month, just in rent fees for people to hold their art there. So we can go into the eaches if we want to talk about that, but I think we're here for the big, broad picture. We're here to get something outside of, we want to get something that's not away from Main Street and we want to bring that vibrant look to the street. And what we're going to get with that, we will have a monetary return that will ultimately bring a revenue value back to the city. So I just wanted to bring that forward tonight. I'm sitting over here and I'm a guy who loves to get to yes. I retired out of the military after 26 years and I hate people who try to stifle things and get to know. So sorry for my kind of aggressive approach here, but that's my personality. So, thank you all.
Okay, we're getting, getting kind of late here.
This is, this is our board who are passionate.
Yeah. Tim Gaffney, I'm a current board member. I spoke, spoke at our last. This is a, we're a nonprofit. This is a public-private that we're trying to establish with the city and we're trying to establish it for a thing that's been here for a long time. And if any of you are a restaurant owner or a person downtown where we run anywhere from three to 700 people for First Friday through our businesses, I guarantee you somebody stopping and having a meal, having a drink, enjoying themselves in downtown Canyon City. So it's putting us on Main Street and I, we do, we need to establish a viable budget on what the building we're going to purchase. We have other options besides Classic as well. We need to get into that mind frame where what are we going to do to solve this problem? You and all of us out here. I keep on seeing a lot of heads shake and what are we going to do? Council members, how do you keep a viable entity? How do you put a dollar amount on the fact that we can hire or we currently have two or to three people that work there, that pay taxes, that own homes, that their children go to school here? That's the thing that I think that Mayor Troutman was trying to get through to everybody. And I do agree with everybody here. We need to provide you with how much we need for our entity to buy a building. If it needs to be rehabbed, as City Administrator Stevens said, what we need to do. And that's what we're trying to get here. And I think that there's still some things we need to, but we need something for you guys to say, yeah, let's do this or no, we're not going to do this. And I agree with Preston, we have properties out here. How much is the Clock Tower going to pay us in rent back for the Clock Tower? How much does Constantino's pay us in rent? This is a viable entity that we need in this community. And, you know, I'm not an artist. My mom was and that's probably the reason why I'm up here. But we do need to provide you with the budget on what we need on a monetary basis from the city to make this thing happen. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we're getting a little long here, but Jerry?
Yeah, maybe I can just wrap it up. I think most of us up here are on board with you guys. I think we agree and I totally agree with Preston, Mayor Preston, Mayor Troutman.
Preston works just fine.
About the benefit of having this downtown and I'm 100% in agreeance. I think right now what we're struggling with is a couple of things. How do we make it work and the timing? So I think we just all need to, I mean, have a session, discuss this before, because we're not going to decide tonight, so I think that's where we're at. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with that. We, we'll need to have to go ahead and, I don't think there's anybody here with a huge thumbs down. And in agreement that I think that we would like to go forward with some things that we will ask for and we'll have to get together. Rusty, we're, and Sammy, you, we're running, go ahead, just, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. My wife Debbie and I have owned Classic Furniture for 18 years, this building. And I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk. We also want to thank Canyon City because we've gone from a small store to the largest store on Main Street. It's 19,000 square feet. We're 70 years old and it's time to step away. We have several businesses. It's time to step away from this one. Debbie especially has been very involved in the downtown businesses and worked to develop and, and really upgrade and make our downtown a great place. We've been supporters of the Art Center for quite some time and we've offered this to the Art Center at a very reasonable price. There's not a realtor involved, so you've cut down 6% right there in cost. But we're in a timeframe. We love the downtown. The only option for retail 19,000-square-foot building is not something I would want to see in downtown Canyon City. We already have three marketplace consignment places. We've had an offer from another market, from a marketplace consignment company to buy this place. There's also been options of a marketplace consignment of used tools and car parts. Whoa, it's retail and that's the only option we have aside from the Art Center. So we want to see downtown thrive. We don't want to see Classic Furniture vacant. That is a big hole in downtown. It's really, for me, it's more than the Art Center, although we support them. It's about downtown and what does our downtown look like? And we want to, because we have connections with so many people there, we believe it's the most healthy thing to work with the Art Center. But when we, if we list this, the price goes up because our costs go up. And so there is a timeframe here that we're looking at. So we encourage you to make the decision that's best for the city. We believe that art and we believe our building would be a great opportunity. I don't see many other opportunities for that 19,000-square-foot building aside from the Art Center that would really be an asset to downtown. So those are my thoughts. You can take them for what they're worth and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rusty. I think Sammy, you're, did you have a comment?
Mayor Troutman, council, I'm here on three levels this evening. Emotional, my mother was one of the charter members, 1947. So I feel like I kind of go back as far as my allegiance to FCA is concerned. I'm here as a businessperson on Main Street in the arts. This does have an effect on me and this has an effect primarily because it will draw more people to downtown Canyon City, which is what I think we've all been striving for, for many, many years. Because without people downtown, we do not have a downtown, period. And because of the nature of FCA, it puts a face on Canyon City, which I would be very proud of. I spent about 20 years living in a small town in California, which actually incorporated one square mile. We had 58 art galleries. People came from all over the world to buy art. So my dream, of course, would be to see more art in Canyon City. But culturally, this provides something for our families that we desperately need. We need places for our children to hang out and to learn and to grow. And an art center can be and should be the heart. That building is an anchor in downtown Canyon City. So what becomes of that building is my concern as well as every resident in Canyon City. Because it could attract, as Rusty pointed out, it could attract a level of commerce, which we don't want downtown. So those are the areas that my concerns are. So I hope that the city will get involved and I do honestly believe that the city should be involved in every aspect, not just the financial part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Any other questions in council? Any other questions of council? I'd like to try to wrap this up right now. Do we want to talk about having a, do I see any hands up there? No. A meeting of council to discuss this or how would you want to proceed? You tell me, how do you want to proceed? Okay, well, let's, can, can we, can we give those feedback questions to Ryan? And he can tabulate them and then as quickly as possible, I think we need to get together and meet on the various questions and sort through them. Does that sound agreeable? As a council, as an executive session?
Mayor Troutman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I think it might be helpful if Ryan collates the questions, provides them to FCA so that at the, at our meeting, we have the responses from FCA to the questions that have been asked this evening. I think that that might speed along the conversation that we have as council, but fully, fully supportive of that conversation and of trying to determine how to get to yes. Thanks.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. That was the intent.
So if I can get any additional questions from council by the end of the week and we will work on setting up an executive session?
Great, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then I have, came in late, but I know this young lady and I'm going to ask her, Ashley Sack? Would you come forward and you want to talk about the pool in the budget?
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight as a member of our rafting community. I know, I also like water in addition to trails. I was a six-year raft guide with Echo Canyon River Expeditions. The river is what brought me to this community and after 20 years, I'm still so proud to be here and grateful for all the work that you do to make our community a recreation destination. I think it's the job of our community to provide some low-stakes environments for children, youth, and anyone really who wants to learn how to enjoy those world-class amenities that we have in this community, provide those for folks. So we have things like Shelf Road, we have the Royal Gorge, which is Class V whitewater, which attracts people from all across the country and the world. And I would hate to see that there would not be a place where our children and any other community member who is interested in learning how to do these incredible activities do not have a place to learn to do so safely. So much like our city and our Parks Department does an amazing job of providing parks and places for our children to play, I really consider the pool very similar to a playground. Why? We let children grow and play and fall and get back up again in a place where we can help them and assist them and be at their aid in these low-stakes environments. So I would love to see our city, much like they invest in playgrounds and parks, invest in a pool for our children to help to learn, help them to learn how to swim so that they can be raft guides just like their mom or their dad or both. And so I am here in support of the city budgeting some money to the tune of $100,000 a year to help support the pool efforts and in conjunction with our Canyon City Recreation and Parks District and in conjunction with our Parks Department and other entities that need to help support these, these programs and progresses so that we can continue to have a safe environment to grow our recreation community. I think I took a breath in there somewhere, but somewhere. In any case, thank you.
I missed it. Go ahead, breathe. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yes.
I think we were, we had a discussion on that and...
Actually, if Brandon brings back up Tammy's slideshow, that's one of the items on the slide.
Okay. So...
So we needed guidance from city council if this is, if this is something that you want included into the budget or not.
Okay. Do we want to discuss that right now? Do you want to individually get ahold of Ryan and let him know?
So, so what is, what is the question?
The question is, should we be funding money from the city budget to help pay down the pool cost? So in addition to the sales tax that people are voting on tomorrow, should the city also be contributing money from the general fund or Quality of Life Fund to help pay down the total cost of the pool project?
Emily?
I'm a huge supporter of the pool and I'm a huge supporter of a lot of things in the community, but I, I kind of am leaning towards saying that the, if everything passes tomorrow, there is that new marginal sales tax increase. And I don't view the city's budget as really different from the community's budget. It's public funds and the public will be contributing through the sales tax. So I'm, I, you know, I have an open mind on it. I could be, I would just say I'm not yet convinced that we should, in addition to a sales tax, budget this much money per year toward the pool.
Anyone else?
This much meaning $100,000, is that what the...
Per year for X years, I think. Is that right?
It might be tough to encumber future councils to that agenda. I am not sure we can do that. That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, I had spoken with City Attorney Hoffman about that. It's something that as we develop an IGA with the Rec District, it's something that we could put in that IGA subject to appropriations. If council, if that was council's desire.
Yeah. You understand that we, this council could say yes for the next 10 years, but the next council, we can encumber that next group of elected officials to that same agenda. So there was an intergovernmental IGA agreement that would have to be subject to, if we did it, it would have to be subject to future councils agreeing to it. We can't legally encumber them. So that would be a discussion that maybe we should talk about after tomorrow.
Okay, and I do believe Councilmember Schmisher had her hand up.
I didn't see it. Amy?
Thanks so much. Yes, I just wanted to add that it would be if and only if all three ballot measures passed. I definitely understand Councilwoman Tracy's point regarding kind of the city budget and sales tax. I would just add that it would shorten the lifespan of that additional, rather minimal sales tax increase. So it would kind of be a city contribution that would enable that sales tax to, to end earlier for our citizens and residents and lots of tourists who pass through and pay it. I also wanted to note that the city has made these sorts of informal, you know, agreements for, for out years, thinking in particular about the ditch crossing agreement where it isn't a formal agreement. We could, you know, say that we aren't going to appropriate those funds this year or we aren't going to roll over funds from previous years, but we certainly do have kind of, or the alleyway reconstruction project where, you know, many, many years ago, we made kind of a commitment and this council chooses to continue to follow through on it. So while I do think it would be obviously subject to annual appropriations, there certainly is precedent for having an agreement to, or an idea of contributing a certain amount for a cause each year. So I am in favor of this. I think it, the amount kind of depends on, from my perspective, some of our other budget conversations this evening and kind of what, what magic city staff can work behind the scenes. But I think if there's agreement to at least postpone Clock Tower Plaza, the Clock Tower Plaza project, that there would be sufficient funds to consider a contribution if the three ballot measures pass so that the sales tax can sunset earlier. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Would anyone else like to contribute? No, we're going to move on. Okay? We'll bring that up.
We've got one more slide for, regarding the budget.
I'm sorry, Tammy, I keep cutting you off. Go right ahead.
Our last slide is to whether or not we include the Black Hills Poll Assessment in the 2025 budget. It was budgeted in 2024.
Questions? Kathy? Emily? Go ahead, Emily.
Well, I, I think I spoke in favor of budgeting for this again when, when we last talked about the budget. It's, when we look at, you can look at this a variety of different ways. You can look at it from the point of view of how much city funds go toward paying the electric bill every year, or you can look at it from a community point of view. And as I mentioned earlier at previous meeting, I, this would have been, if we had been able to get this done earlier in the year, this would have been very helpful information given the fact that Black Hills has asked for a substantial rate increase. Of course, that's a moving target too. Apparently, from what Black Hills has filed with the PUC, we may see very different numbers when they file their rebuttal statement this Friday, November 8th. But I think regardless of what those numbers look like on the requested rate increase, it's really going to be important sooner and later for the city to understand what shape this distribution system is in within city limits. So I would just advocate that we roll that forward into the 2025 budget.
How does the council feel of that?
I agree and if it, if it doesn't become something necessary, then we don't need to spend it.
Correct.
I was going to say it's at least a placeholder and we're able to utilize it if we need it. And depending on issues that are potentially out there, I think it's good to still maintain it in the budget.
Okay. Go ahead. We're going to just move it forward then for note in the 2025 budget. And, okay? Are you okay with that, Tim?
Yep, I am good with that.
All right, Amy?
Thanks.
Yes, she is. Okay. Let's just see that, move it forward. Thank you. Give them the slide.
I do not have any more slides.
Well, that's it. So you have, you have earned your overtime. Oh wait, we don't pay you overtime.
No, you don't.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. Very informative. We will have the, a lot more on the pool and a lot more for the Art Center. And I think it was, I think it was very positive. We thank you for coming out and we'll get our questions to Ryan and he'll get them back to you and we'll keep this dialogue going. Okay? All right, thank you. Another topic? One more topic? All right. This is C. Oh, this, this is a big one here. This is, "Second Reading and Adoption by Title Only of Ordinance 7, Series 2024, Entitled: An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Setting the Compensation of the City Administrator." It asks the city administrator to do a report.
This is a second reading. I'm not aware of any public comment that has come in regarding the topic and encourage council to vote.
Okay, Emily?
I move for approval of Ordinance 7, Series of 2024, on second reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hammer, thank you. Are there any discussion on that motion? Would you please call roll?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
Well, thank you all for sticking in there and our next meeting is going to be November the 18th, right here, same place. We are adjourned.